That's what I think so too. Why are we requesting an exception?
Thanks.
And item 50 and 51 are relating to CDBG grants or contracts with Passages Women's Transitional Living Programs. Good evening, Patty.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. When I was looking at the, this particular agenda item, I noticed that the contract as linked to in the agenda indicated that Patersons cannot discriminate based on race, religion, et cetera. When I went to the Patersons website, I noticed as part of their program requirements, individuals were told they would need to participate in Bible studies. And I thought that was a conflict in the organization versus what was required as far as the Community Home Lock Grant. So I contacted Barb Garcia, and she contacted Passages and indicated that that wouldn't be a problem for them, but that she would also contact the city attorney for more clarification and that there isn't any conflict between what Passages is doing and with the requirements of the program. And I just wanted an update on that. Thank you.
Thank you. We do not have any further speaker request forms on section two through 56. Have I missed anyone? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. Any council member or staff member would like to remove any items two through 56 for separate consideration? We'll first go to Alderwoman Amanda Scott. Amanda.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 30.
Item 30. Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and item number 21.
Okay, so far we have item 21 and 30. Anything else? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve two through 56 with the exception of 21 and 30? Motion by Lewis, second by Doyle. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are now on item number 21, and we'll go to our Public Works Chair, Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 21 is to approve the amendments to the procedures for design build procurement of the public improvement projects, best value process. I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Scott, second by Lewis. Any discussion? Alderman Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity here to, I just wanted to get a little bit of understanding of what this item is and when would this be used.
I'll go to our Assistant City Attorney, Carla Cushman. Carla.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is some amendments to the design build procedures. I worked with the Parks and Rec Department several months ago to draft these and send them through council, and they were approved. We're making two changes. We drafted them in large part for the Skyline Trail System Project because Parks and Rec wanted to do that as a design build plan, and state law requires these procedures before you do a design build project. The changes to the procedures that you are looking at today are just removing two references to the Finance Office regarding opening of the bids. Really, that's handled generally by the departments, and Finance wanted the references to them removed, so we drafted that, those changes, and that's what's before you today.
Thanks. Basically, it's just a couple amendments to what's already existing. Thank you.
Anything further? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are now on item number 30, and we'll go to our illustrious Finance Chairman, Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 30 is acknowledged Capital Improvement Program Committee Monthly Update for July of 2014. I move approval.
Motion by Lewis, second by Nordstrom. And we'll go to Alderwoman Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. At the CIP meeting, there was an item that was up for discussion that is contained in the minutes, and if I can, if you'll indulge me, I'd like to just read a passage from those minutes. It said, "Alderman Wright addressed the discussion regarding the STIP funding and the state's request for support from the local communities for the program funding. Alderman Wright advised that he has proposed that the state support a local road and street tax to allow communities to generate the funding required to address local street repair issues. In response to a question from Wright," if I'm saying this correctly, "Titus suggested that the urban systems program would require reevaluation and projects reprioritized should the federal funding levels be reduced. Wright requested that the staff provide a report to the Public Works Committee addressing the impact of a reduction in federal funding and how it would affect the urban systems program." And the reason I'm bringing this up is, number one, my primary question is, is this coming, when is this coming to the Public Works meeting? That's my primary question. The reason I bring this up is Alderman Wright brought this up because we attended a meeting of the Black Hills Local Governments, and there, and I know Barb Garcia is very much aware of it too. The federal government over the last three years has been cutting back on programs and continues to cut back, and every single budget year, their budget runs from October 1st through September 30th. And we're always waiting as cities and the states to find out if the federal funds are going to still be there for the federally funded programs. Our states, and I believe Governor Dugard, if you've been reading the paper, has also been indicating that when he was elected into office a while back, he said that he did not support road taxes. He's now starting to change his tune. The reason he's changing his tune, federal government is cutting back on funds, and so this is really going to become a very, very huge concern, especially if we do have to find some way to actually support the state's roads and our local city roads. And Jerry Wright was actually working on if they are going to institute a statewide, you know, penny tax on a gallon of gas or anything else like that, that the cities and the municipalities and the counties all might be able to benefit. So he had brought that up at the Black Hills Local Governments as a discussion point, and I think it's a valid one, and even though he's not with us today, I did let him know I would bring this topic up. So Dale, my question is, is do you have a Public Works meeting that this will be coming to?
Thank you, Mayor. I believe the August 26th Public Works Committee meeting, we can have a discussion item. If I may be specific and answer your question regarding the urban systems funding, I'd like to do that.
Please do, if the mayor will allow.
Thank you. The urban systems funding that the city Rapid City receives, I believe, is a portion of the existing gas tax. All communities, Class 1 communities in the state, as well as some of the counties, receive a portion of that money for, for local roads, if you will. I haven't heard any discussion amongst the DOT about any reduction in the urban systems funding. It's all based on the current gas tax.
All right. Thank you, Dale, and I look forward to that discussion because I do know that, I know there were alternate revenue sources being sought. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion on item 30? The motion is for approval. I'm sorry, for acknowledgement. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Public comment is now open on items 57 through 62. 57 through 62, and we have five speaker request forms on items, on item 61. So we do not have any speaker request forms for the other items. So we'll first go to Dana Foreman, who would like to speak on item 61. While Dana's coming up, I'll just read that item into the record. This is an appeal of the denial of a request for an exception from James Huff to allow no emergency overflow tank for property owners on Calle Baja Street with pressure sewer, with pressure sewer systems. Dana, the floor is yours.
So I have a aerial photo of the area that's, we'll talk about tonight. There we go. So I'm Dana Foreman with KLJ Engineers, and I represent the homeowners along Calle Baja Street who are here tonight. And in 2013, there's three residences along Calle Baja, Stanton Residence, Helen Residence, and the Huff Residence on the far west end there. In 2013, their sanitary sewer force main and lift station was at the end of its life cycle, and due to corrosion, it failed. So in the past, oh, six to nine months, they've been pumping out their septic tank that the actual lift, the lift pump is in. So about every two weeks, they pump out of that tank with a pump, truck service. So we're in the process of designing a new force main and grinder pumps in each home, and then the new force main will go out to near Falls Drive, connect to a manhole that's in the city sewer system there, the gravity sewer system. And we're here today to request an exception to the city criteria 3.14.1.0M, which is the 500-gallon emergency overflow tank. And really, the reason that the homeowners and myself are requesting this exception is, here's a picture of the pump. And I talked to the, this is an E1 pump, that's, E1's the manufacturer of the pump, and they weren't familiar with a overflow tank being connected to their, to their system such as this. They did, they did say an extra connection could be, could be connected, and really it would be, there's, there's four, there's four locations where the contractor could provide an inlet from the house to the pump system, and this, this is the inlet here, where, and each, each side has that opening. Otherwise, there wouldn't be a sealed connection where overflow tank could be connected to it. And our concern not only is the cost of an overflow tank, which we anticipate between $3,000 to $4,000 due to the geographic constraints of the area being rocky, a lot of trees, and extreme slopes out there, but the, one of my main concerns is the fact that if we connect the tank at one of these inlet connections here, it's actually above, above the alarm here, and if that alarm, say the power goes out on the pumping system, and then, then the homeowner uses until the alarm goes off here, then it, then it would finally start to spill into the overflow tank here. So really, there'd be this false alarm going off, and the homeowner saying, oh geez, I got an extra 500 gallons of overflow that I can use. So really, there's this, there's this false sense of, of an overflow tank in my mind where that emergency alarm's going to be going off the whole time. So for them, for them to know when their overflow tank is full, every time they flush the toilet or run the dishwasher, they would actually have to go out and check, check the overflow tank to make sure it hadn't been compromised because that alarm would already be going off. In our minds, the best solution is to not have the overflow tank, let the alarm do what it's supposed to do, is go off, then, then know that you cannot use any more water, and the alarm would actually be on a battery, a battery-powered system where to send an email or a text via battery in case that landline power does go off. And, and then rather than having that overflow tank, we just rely on the alarm. One, one thing we would like to do, rather than have the overflow tank, is to actually have, go to an auxiliary power hookup where, once that alarm goes off, we could hook up a power generator to it, and then the, the pump could be ran, and then they would have, have pumping capacity again.
Thank you. We'll now go to Tom Stanton, also on item 61. Good evening, Tom.
Good evening. I'll give Dana's pump back. I'm Tom Stanton. I and my wife Mary live at 4132 Calle Baja, and, did you leave this on? Yes. That's how close we are to the lake. That's from my second-floor deck. And I have a very compact yard. Nobody has a greater interest in protecting Canyon Lake than the three of us. Now, the problem is, when you get hit with a $30,000 to $50,000 unexpected expense, and you're retired, and my wife is retired, and Jim is retired, and even Tom, who isn't retired, that is an awful lot of money. And so what you want to make sure that what you're doing is going to do some good. Now, you should know that there is not a single one of these systems installed in Rapid City that has an overflow tank at this point. Carl said at our last meeting that this wasn't an experiment, and technically, he's correct. It's not an experiment in the technical sense of the word. But nobody, to my knowledge, has ever used a backup tank with this system, and the manufacturer did not design it to have an overflow tank. This is a sealed system which protects, the manufacturer warrants it to, to do the job. Once you add that overflow tank, if it's engaged, you no longer have a sealed system. The overflow tank, if it were to continue to fill, would then go to Canyon Lake. There was one anecdotal example of this tank. Incidentally, there are probably at least 25 of this exact system without an emergency tank installed in Rapid City right now. And according to the city engineer's office, in one anecdotal incident, there was a backup, and it's, it backed up in the house. And at least according to the engineer's office, this homeowner had been gone for 60 days, had not checked the tank for 60 days. Assuming that could happen, and if we had an auxiliary tank, again, according to the city engineer, that auxiliary tank would provide two days' protection. So 58 days of that 60-day period would have run right into Canyon Lake instead of in my house where I'd take care of it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tom. We'll now go to Jim Huff, also on item 61.
Good evening. I was helping other people, I'll see if I can help myself here with this. Really, here we go. The real issue that we're looking at is how to ensure that the electrical grinder lift stations would continue to operate in the event of a prolonged power outage on Calle Baja, i.e. last October 4th. The consultant engineers, let me see if I can get this on here a little bit better. The consultant engineers and homeowners recommend to install an emergency electrical backup power system to be activated in the event of a prolonged electrical outage. The emergency electrical power system would ensure that the lift stations remain operational during any prolonged power outage. Thank you. The city engineer's position is to install a 500-gallon, unproven and untested overflow tank on each individual pressure sewer system, and wait until the line power is restored. This would require the emptying of the tanks by commercial septic tank trucks and could result in an overflowing of sewer water into Canyon Lake during extreme weather conditions. We had extreme weather conditions on October 4th of last year. I was without power for six days. It wasn't just the snow and the power outage, trees were down across the road leading into our property. So I consider this an unrealistic approach. Now, I have two more transparencies. Last week, last week, our city engineer drew a diagram comparable with this to explain how the 500-gallon tank would be fit into the system. Well, this is a hermetically sealed system. In other words, it would go from the house to the lift pump and out, and you'd have to tap in at one of these points. Now, this is pretty much a representation of what was drawn. One of the problems is that for this system to even be semi-operational, you'd have to have an open top cover because it would not work against a hermetically sealed tank. Now, there are four concerns. A consultant engineer said the four concerns are these. The cost of the system. This system, as Tom pointed out, I'm retired, I'm a retired hospital director and naval officer, and on a limited income there. This system would cost more than it cost to build a house, the house that we live in in 1970. Compromise I just continued with, and contour, because it's Stanton's home, the contour of the land would not allow for a tank of this type. I tried to be fair on this. My drawing is pretty rudimentary, too. This is what we're proposing, an electrical system to be installed, to be activated in the event of power loss. So in summary, I think that the electrical system to be installed is a more viable solution to the issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. We'll now go to Tom Holland, also on item 61.
Thank you, Mayor and councilpeople. There's nothing more glamorous than sewage, obviously, and this has been a interesting six to seven months for our residents on Calle Baja. You know, we, we trust our engineering firm we hired. We think the solution he's come up with is more than adequate. It's much more modern than some of these pumps that were installed 20 years ago that are still being used. As EB1's been around for a long time, the older ones didn't have the, the function that would call you if the pump goes out, if electricity goes out, whatever else. So we, we, we're concerned about the safety of the lake. We're also concerned about doing the right thing and doing it at cost efficiently as much as we can, and so we just ask for your consideration with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. We'll now go to Mary Holland, also on item 61. Good evening, Mary.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm here to wrap this up. I'm the sympathy person. And I correct my fellow homeowners, this isn't six months. We're going in month nine. This means Navy showers, not washing your clothes at home, dragging them to the laundry mat, not doing a dishwasher, not flushing your toilets very often. It's a very unpleasant way to live. You might think camping's fun for a week. You do it nine months and counting, it's not much fun. Poor Mr. Stanton has dishpan hands. I mean, we are in a tough position here. And it's worse because even if you agree with us tonight, we may not have a working sewer system till Christmas, if we're lucky. Because as you know, every contractor is busy in town, and this has just been a very a long, a long journey for us, and I want to thank the city engineer for, you know, being cordial and helpful. But basically, what they told us is, this is your problem, this is a private land, private line, and we're trying to do the right thing, and we really would like this resolved. I'd hate to go into year two without a sewer system. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. We do not have any more speaker request forms on items 57 through 62. Have I missed anyone? Seeing none, public comment on these items is now closed. We'll proceed with item number 57, and we'll go to Chad Lewis on item 57.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me, item number 57 is second reading of ordinance, 5997, ordinance to amend Rappis Municipal Code, Section 2.60.030, to change the month in which planning commission members are appointed. I move approval.
Motion by Lewis, second by Nordstrom. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. 58.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 58 is the first reading of ordinance 6005, ordinance to establish a community investment committee by adding section 2.24.090 to Rappis Municipal Code. I move approval.
Motion by Lewis, second by Roberts. We'll go to Richie Nordstrom. Richie.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to fully endorse this program, and it's something that I've been really kind of watching from the sidelines as, as it progresses through, and that this is essentially getting the whole, whole process formalized now so that we can actually start working towards, in conjunction with item 59, is with strengthening families. So if we get these two working together and, and start working on the poverty issue that we have here in Rapid City, I see this as a good, good start. And I would challenge the groups that are working on this to see if they can't help us figure out what that silver bullet is, or what processes we have to go through to get poverty eliminated. And it's a big, large challenge, but if we get two steadfast groups working on this, I, I see a good thing happening from this. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll go to Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for clarification for the public, and probably for some councilmembers, myself as well, can we, how does this change what we exist in, current have existing? I'm not sure to direct that question to.
While Barb is coming up, I'll, I'll, I'll try. And that is, we, we now have a, what we call, what's been called for years, a subsidy committee, which consists of the mayor and council president and vice president, and some staff, and staff support. And, and it's those three people that make the recommendations to the city council. What we're proposing to do, and also item 59, we'll just talk about that now since it's relevant to this. Item 59, I think in 2006 or 2007, the Strengthening Families Committee was formed. There hasn't really, there hasn't been terms of office established for that committee. It still exists, but, but it really hasn't been formalized. And so ordinance number 6005, what it, what it does is it takes the mayor and the two councilmembers, and no longer has them serving on, on this committee. Their voice comes when it comes to the council. What this does is it gives, it gives community members and those that work in this field the opportunity to, to weigh in onto what the recommendation should be. And then ordinance number, I'm not sure if that ordinance number is correct, 6006. What that does is it simply formalizes the Strengthening Families Committee and would have that committee appointed by the Community Investment Committee.
Thank you, sir. That's all my questions were.
Did I miss anything?
No.
Okay. All right. And thank you for your work on this, Barb. Any further discussion on this item? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. 59.
Thank you, Senior Mayor. Item number 59 is first reading of ordinance 600, an ordinance to establish a Strengthening Families Committee by adding section 2.24.100 to Rappis Municipal Code. I move approval.
Motion by Lewis, second by Laurenti. And correction, this is ordinance 6006.
Okay.
Further discussion? And that's okay with the motion maker and the second?
By all means.
And we'll go to Councilwoman Darla Drew.
Okay, just help me with this one because I don't understand the need for this at, at, at this level. It seems like we're almost duplicating services, so to speak, but maybe I misinterpret what's going on with strengthening families. I'm not sure. If you could ask, or, you know, explain what this committee is, is formed to do.
We will recognize our Community Development Manager, Barb Garcia. Good evening, Barb.
Good evening. Thank you. The Strengthening Families Platform is strengthening families for better outcomes for youth and children. That's the full title of it. And a task force was formed to identify needs and gaps in services that existed within the community and to come up with solutions on how to solve those. And the reason it was needed was because those, for the past, since 1976, we've had the exact same top 10 high priority issues on our consolidated plan with no action. And so what we decided was we needed collaborative efforts, and we started changing how our funding structure was going to be between the Vekuravich Foundation, the United Way, and the city. And trying to collaborate, not do duplicate services, we were funding, so, all three of us were funding the same people for the same thing in many cases, which was not very effective. So we looked at- So, we looked at creating the task force to identify the issues, identify people to lead the committees to actually make it happen. And in the first year, we challenged those committees to come up with at least one goal or two, we wanted one or two goals, and we challenged them to accomplish them in one year instead of the standard five to ten-year timeframes. Because we all know, nobody starts working on it until the fifth year, and it doesn't happen. So, that was the charge. We have ten committees that are addressing the high priority issues, and they accomplished all of their goals in the first year, and they adopted new goals. That was the task, is to adopt new goals each year and accomplish them in one year and do it in a collaborative way. And we've been very successful with it up until I lost staff because I was the leader of all ten, just about all ten committees. And without being able to be at all of the meetings and keep them pushed, it wouldn't go. And a task force by definition means you have an issue to address, and when you're done, it's gone. But in this case, this is a living organism that at each year, as we do our five-year consolidated plans, we identify the new gaps in services and issues, and we challenge these committees to keep moving. And so, we need the formalization of that organization to keep it going. And with the way we operate now, there's on the investment committee, right now, there's no one, we had a steering committee, but again, that was temporary. And many of the people who were appointed to that are, have moved on, changed jobs, aren't involved. So, we lost the structure. And so, by formalizing it and having appointed committees and having it being a high priority of the city, that gives us strength in applying for other funding sources, too.
Okay. Okay. Because this is a particular area of interest for me, could you give me an example of one of those gaps that you identified?
The twenty-four-seven Crisis Center for Mental Health and Substance Abuse was one of them. We accomplished opening that within a two-year timeframe. The programs we modeled that on took over five years to get started. But by using the collaborative groups that we did, another one was the work done on truancy when the new law went into effect. Another one was on our homeless one, setting a ten-year plan to end homelessness, chronic homelessness. And the plan has been developed, and they are in the process of now adopting a format of addressing those that are the most chronic and hardest, they're going to actually go out and assess them and start putting the funds towards those that are in the highest risk of dying on the street within the next year. That's the goal of getting them housed first and getting them services first, instead of helping those that need the help the least and leaving the chronic ones always left to last. We're shifting. So, there've been, across the board, the early childhood development and childcare. We opened two new childcare centers for low-income families, and the new, the name of their organizations just stopped, but they just put into effect a program for taking very low-income kids and giving them a head start getting through preschool and into kindergarten to help bring their levels.
Is that Starting Strong?
Yes, Starting Strong. Thank you. That came out of one of those committees. That was the goal and their accomplishments, and they're doing very well with it. So, that's just a few of the, the number out of there.
Is there a report or something online or somewhere I could find out more information? I don't want to take up too much of your time, but is this?
On my website with, on the city, we have information about it, and it may not be real current at the moment, just because I've got new staff who are learning how to put it on. But I do, anything you want, call me, and I'd be happy to help you with it.
Well, I just want to take some time and educate myself, so thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? The motion is for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Sir? Item number sixty?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number sixty is the first reading of ordinance six thousand, an ordinance amending section seventeen point zero six, chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code resoning with described property as requested by Tony Marshall from General Commercial District Office to Commercial Office District for lots three through nine of block one, Tower Ridge Two, generally described as being located at seven zero four five and seven two zero one, South Highway sixteen. I move approval.
Motion by Lewis, second by Roberts. Quick question for our planning director, Brett Limbaugh. Has this gone through Planning Commission?
Yes, sir, it has.
Okay. And their recommendation is for approval?
Yes.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item sixty-one. We'll go to Alderwoman Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number sixty-one is the appeal of denial of request for an exception from James Huff to allow no emergency overflow tank for property owners on Kalabaha Street with pressure sewer systems. And I yield the floor.
Floor has been yielded. Do we have a motion? Clarify your motion, please.
Move to approve the appeal.
To approve the appeal and to allow the homeowners to not put in the holding tank.
Correct.
Okay. So, we have a motion by Lewis and a second by Doyle. And we'll go to Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was wondering if I could ask staff a question on this particular issue?
Please do.
I don't know if that would go to?
Go to our city engineer, probably Dale Tech.
Okay. Thank you. Can you, I didn't read where staff had, had a chance to say much about the latest, or maybe you have, I just didn't read it, where staff was able to respond to the, I guess, the most latest iteration, which is a power, backup power generation. Is that, does that make a difference in staff's recommendation here and their determination? Does it mitigate the situation that staff's talked about in some of the stuff that I've read, the denial letter? So, if you could answer that, that'd be great. Thank you.
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor. The, the letter that we have attached that discusses the reason for denial states two reasons for the holding tank. One is in case of a power failure, and the other is in case of a pump failure. As they've described, if there's a power failure, yes, you can hook up a generator and you're off and pumping again. Doesn't do much if there's a pump failure. The electricity will be there. If there's a pump failure, the pump just won't work. They've talked about, they can get one immediately. I think we've all had to call a plumber or someone to come fix something, and they can't always get there right away. So, if you don't mind, I'd like to expound on how we got to this point.
Absolutely.
Back in two thousand and eight, the council development committee finalized the work they'd been done, doing for a number of years to adopt these criteria that the Kalabaha people are seeking exception to. There was members of city staff, there were members from the consulting community, there were members from the city council, and there were also developers, and just as the, the name of the committee describes, that went through these criteria, created these criteria, and adopted these criteria. So, there was a lot of thought, and a lot of time, a lot of effort put into these criteria. Mr. Stanton stated that this is a new and unproven system. He's exactly right. When their system was put in decades ago, this criteria wasn't there. It's new since two thousand and eight. It was adopted officially in March twenty-twelve, and he's exactly right. There are no systems like this in town. However, that's what our current criteria states that should be in place. Also, on top of that, the criteria says they should actually have two pumps. We've met with the homeowners and actually granted that exception for them to not have to have two pumps. One pump with the, the storage, we believe, would provide the, the correct amount of protection to not only their home, but Canyon Lake in effort that there's a failure.
Can you, on the second pump, the compromise there, and I noticed that, what's the cost to the homeowner if they had to buy two pumps based on the, the criteria without the exception?
Yeah, the, the system that they have is completely different. It's a bigger system, has a little more storage capacity, and it contains two pumps. I don't know what the price is. Perhaps their engineer could speak to that. I believe he probably has the prices available.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Sir, if you could answer that question, do you have an idea what that cost would be if you didn't have the compromise for the dual pump situation, the cost difference?
Yeah, we spoke to Farmer Supply. They're a local pump supply company, and they mentioned that the single pump is about five thousand dollars, and then double pump is about ten thousand. Those were numbers from December, so they might have changed a little bit, but virtually it's double the capacity, double the amount of material.
All right. Thank you very much. And I just wanted to, to get those answers because honestly, I, I, from a policy standpoint, I really would like to see a stand behind staff, especially since we have made a compromise here already that, that has saved the homeowners approximately five thousand dollars, maybe even more. Those pumps may even be more, the difference between the two. And I think it's a fair compromise that they have the backup. Two days could be, could make a significant difference. It's minimalized by the, the engineers for, you know, for the balance here, but I believe that the city struck a good compromise in saving the homeowners five thousand dollars from a dual to a single pump. So, I'm going to support staff on this and require the, the backup tanks. Thank you.
Alderman Richie Nordstrom. Richie.
Thank you, Mayor. Question for Dale. Have you had a chance to take a look over the schematics that we saw tonight?
As far as the pump is concerned, yes, we've looked at that. We've talked to the manufacturer. The pumping system is correct. As far as the diagram for the piping system, I believe, as he claimed was rudimentary, based on my very rudimentary drawing that I produced at Public Works Committee last week. Literally, there are a half a dozen ways you could design that, that holding tank into the system that would not interfere with the operation of the pumping system that they're talking about. They haven't put the effort forward to do that. Certainly, my staff hasn't designed it for them, but I know that there's a way to do it without much consternation.
Can you address the, the point for the alarm position and the, the outlet where they would go into the overflow tank? Can you address that point?
If the overflow tank is installed properly, the pumping system that they're talking about with the alarms, the alarms would function properly. It would back up, it would, the alarm would go off without a false reading as their engineer indicated. And instead of it backing into the basement of the house, if they don't get to it in time, it would back into the tank. So, I don't believe that there's an issue with putting a tank in in conjunction with the system. I don't believe it would void any of the manufacturer's warranty. It's a standalone system. It's not tied directly to the tank. The tank will just see the, the effluent from the home coming into the pumping system as it always did. It wouldn't know that there's a five-hundred gallon tank upstream.
Thank you, Dale. I'm in agreement with my colleague Alderman Laurenti on supporting the staff on this one. I, I did a little bit of work in this business before, and I've seen the experiences that I've had to deal with in the, in the industrial side, to qualify that. Haven't worked much in the, in the residential side, but I did have the opportunity to go out and inspect septic tanks on, on occasion, and I was the backup person for that. And there was needs or designs for needs of some kind of an alarm system that said, we've got a problem here, and what I'm seeing here on this presentation, I'm not comfortable with the, the alarm system that's in place, and, and also, in my opinion, nothing is ever hermetically sealed totally anyway. So, and when I come to trusting mechanical devices, they will fail eventually, not being, maybe, as you are homeowners, but they do fail, and then it's the next homeowner's responsibility to bear that brunt of that issue. And then the major concern that I have, the real major concern I have, is if there's any chance of the effluent getting into Canyon Lake, all the detrimental effects that it will have on, on the Canyon Lake. We're starting to see a lot of weeds and everything growing in Canyon Lake, a lot of sediment and everything that comes from that, but this would add, add to the fertilizer that we would have in Canyon Lake. I'm just not comfortable with supporting the amendment, or the motion on the floor. Thank you.
Scott. Amanda, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to offer a substitute motion, and that is to uphold the denial of request.
We have a substitute motion by Amanda Scott and a second by Steve Laurenti to uphold staff's recommendation.
And may I ask Dale Tech one question, please?
You may.
Thank you. And Dale, you indicated that the staff has been working with these three property owners on their systems, and that the compromise had already been made to go from one pump, or from two pumps down to one pump, and the condition was to put in this five-hundred gallon tank. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes. The condition for the tank was always there. That's, the criteria says you need to have two pumps and a tank. So, staff felt comfortable saying, okay, we'll waive the requirement to have two tanks, but you gotta have, or two pumps, but you gotta have the tank.
Oh, okay. So, the tank wasn't added to replace the, the requirement for two pumps. The staff just figured that with the five-hundred gallon tank, the necessity of having one pump, the five-hundred gallon tank would satisfy having the second pump. Because the pump would only, when I'm looking at this, the pump would not help with a power failure, it would only help with a pump failure by having two in place.
Correct.
Thank you. I yield the floor.
Thank you. We'll now go to Alderwoman Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have some questions for Engineer Foreman, if I may. Thank you. Could you, there've been some buzz phrases floating around tonight. I'd like you to address them, if you would. The first one being the power failure versus the pump failure in the system.
Yes, ma'am.
Dana, if you could state your, your name and firm for the record again, for the benefit of Charlene.
I'm Dana Foreman with KLJ Engineers, and I represent the homeowners at Kalabaha Street.
Go ahead.
In reference to the power failure versus a pump failure, if, if the power went out, then, then the pumps would not work. Now, the alarms would work. You'd get an alarm based on a battery. Now, if the pumps went out, then you would, you could still have power if the pumps went out. In both scenarios, there wouldn't be any discharge of the sewer to the gravity, city gravity sewer.
The system was designed with, or would be designed with a backup generator, correct?
Yeah, that, that would be our compromise, is that a backup generator could be hooked up. If the power does go out, then you could run your pumps and, and pump out that sewage.
And what did our staff say with respect to the trade-off for the backup generator versus the storage tank? That's not something I've seen clarified in our documentation.
You know, and I, I think we briefly discussed it in a meeting with engineering staff. We didn't, I don't know if we put that in writing, but it was discussed.
Okay. Could you speak to, one of the gentlemen, homeowners made a comment about an open tank requirement, that the storage tank would actually have to be an open system?
Yeah, I think, I think Jim mentioned that, that the, the overflow tank would have a open, open air system on it, open lid. Yeah, I believe, I believe Jim was referring to this open cover here where, I guess, I guess in my mind, when, if, if this is hooked up to the sewage, or hooked up to the, the pump here, you would basically have a water level this high in the system to come back into your storage tank. I don't know if that, that cover would need to be open, but eventually, if enough sewage ran down from the house, you would either, it'd either probably come out this lid here, which it'd be difficult to have a lid that's sealed tightly, or you'd end up running back into your house.
And I would surmise you're a professional engineer?
That's correct.
And how long have you been licensed?
Since two thousand and three.
Okay. In your professional assessment, which scenario has the most risk of detriment to Canyon Lake? The sealed system without the tank, or the system with the tank and the open lid, open cover?
I, I think having the tank there because you really have a false sense of extra capacity that you'd have to physically go monitor. I mean, virtually every time you'd run some water, you'd have to go check that tank. I mean, virtually every time you'd run some water, you'd have to go check that tank to verify what your new level is out in that tank. And this, this is kind of where Dale and I disagree. But really, based on what the manufacturer, without coming into any of the, I'll go back to this pump diagram here. And Dale is correct. I mean, a guy could, you could connect the tank upstream of the pump, but then again, you'd, you'd always have to have a water level that high to go into your tank. And when I talked to the manufacturer, if a guy didn't use one of these manufactured inlets, then you'd be sort of compromising the pump system and not having a pressurized, fully contained system on the bottom. And since you would do that, your alarm would, would be on when you're going into your overflow tank the whole time.
Okay, so it's a false sense of security, is what you're saying?
That's, that's my opinion. You'd have a false sense of security that, oh geez, I got two more days of sewage I can run in my, into my overflow tank even though my alarm is on.
And then we might get to the situation where it's the boy who cried wolf and think, oh, it's not a problem. When there's very well could be a problem.
Yeah, that, that's a scenario I envision.
Okay. And how long have you been using these E1 systems?
Is, how, how long has the E1 system been out there, you mean?
How long have you been saying this is the way you would like to go or recommend for your clients?
This is actually the first one I've designed here in the city. I've designed another one in Colorado. E1's a preferred system. And I, I think the thing that struck me the most is they, they have never heard of an emergency tank being hooked up to the, to the system like this. And they have, they have quite a few technical resources to rely on and, and support.
And how long have these types of pumps been manufactured?
I don't know that right offhand.
Ballpark?
Ballpark. I seen them 10 years ago.
Okay.
Similar system.
And then the last question I have for you, Mr. Foreman, is as a professional engineer, you're willing to risk your reputation on this design?
Yes, I would. I would, I would prefer not to have the 500 gallon tank within the design and rather have a design as we proposed to the city initially with a design exception to the 500 gallon tank.
Thank you for answering my questions. I yield.
You're welcome.
We'll now go to our city engineer Dale Tech. Dale?
Thank you, Mayor. As I stated before, there are literally a dozen, half dozen ways that this can be designed where there would be no risk of overflow of that overflow tank. It doesn't have to be an open system, as Mr. Huff had sketched there. It can be a closed system. As I said, it's apparent they have not, their engineer has not done any design work on the tanking system. It's apparent if he's referring to the, the homeowner's sketch. We'd be more than happy to sit down with them and talk about the viability of either an open system or closed system that would meet the requirements of the, the 500 gallon storage. They haven't done that.
We'll go to Alderman Brad Estes. Brad?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could you put Mr. Huff's sketch up at their place again?
Pardon me, this is not my sketch. This is Dale's sketch.
Sir, I was at that meeting and that's nothing close to Dale's sketch, I can tell you that. In, in my opinion, just my opinion. So Dana, when we talk about a, and I went to some supply houses today and looked at lift stations, and when we talk about a hermetically sealed system and we talk about the capabilities of a lift station and, and its design criteria and such, doesn't that hermetically sealed system start at the, at the capsule itself, not upstream, not how it get, not, not how it comes out of the house and how it gravity feeds to it? Isn't it, isn't it at the, when it comes in, it fills up the grinder, it hits a float, the grinder goes on, it pushes it out, has a check valve? Isn't that the hermetically sealed portion of this system?
That, that's my opinion, yeah. That, that's your, your seal is this lower portion.
Okay. So having a tank upstream or ahead of it doesn't impact, in my mind, the hermetically sealed portion of the, of the equation. You may disagree with that, but, and is my understanding, the, the, the drawing that I envisioned, if you'd put the drawing, whosever it is, up again, please, that, that there was never, in Mr. Dale Tech's drawing, there was never a, a line coming out of that 500 gallon tank back to the, back to the lift station. I believe it was Mr. Tech's opinion that the plumbing would be that you'd put a re, midway up as, as the, so you have a failure, the alarm goes off, they can continue to use the house. You know, you, you can, we can say that they have a false sense of security, but at least they, they have some capacity. If they don't have a storage tank, they have absolutely, they may have a false sense of security too, but it's going to come, come into their house sooner, because there, you wouldn't have that tank. But my understanding is then he would, that sewage would back up that gravity line and then, and then come in a reverse Y into that tank. And then that tank would be pumped out by a commercial truck and it would never run in, you know, it'd never run back into the ejector. So, I mean, they're totally two separate systems. Is that, do I understand, can I ask Dale Tech a question?
Me.
Is that, am I correct, Dale?
You have correctly described the system that I sketched at Public Works with the caveat that I did say there was a possibility that you could, once the pump was operational, drain it back into the, the ejector pump. The, the flow arrow that he has shown on there is the opposite of what my intention was in my drawing. So you are correct. What he's drawn here does not represent what I had drawn at Public Works last.
Then if I could ask Mr. Huff a question?
Yes.
Mr. Huff, on your sheet, you'd, you had mentioned that there was a misunderstanding. You were talking about electrical backup system.
Yes.
Now, are you talking about a system that's, that's hooked, that as soon as line power goes on, it's got a transfer switch and it kicks on and it's got extended fuel? Or are you talking about a Honda generator and, and no, nothing against Honda generator, and an extension cord?
No, let me, let me get the drawing, okay?
Okay, thanks.
So this would not be, as you mentioned, a Honda system. This would be a system that would be hooked up to the lift station pump carrying 220 voltages or 240 voltage. And it would be designed to be kicked on when the electricity was off.
Okay.
So this would, this would basically keep that system in operation if there was a power outage. Now, there was a question asked earlier about the replacement of a pump if a pump went out. Well, we talked with the farmers this morning. We've talked with them several times and met with them. And they cover 24/7.
Sure.
A number of homes in Rapid City. And there's never been a problem where they could not get one of their backup pumps. They have pumps on site.
I appreciate that, Mr. Huff. I'm not asking about the pump. I was just asking about, my, I questioned was, you, you were calling this an electrical system and I was trying to get in my mind how elaborate it might be, if, if it's a generator and an extension cord, or if it's something that's there and, and it, when you have a power outage, it kicks on. And if I understand, that's what you're talking?
That's what I'm talking about.
Okay. So do you have natural gas there? Is that, will this be hooked tight into natural gas then? So it's got a?
Say again?
Do you have natural gas?
Yes.
So would these generators be hooked into natural gas so they have a? See, when I, when I built, when you build buildings that required emergency generators, they're hooked on the natural gas and they exercise every Tuesday or whatever. And so that you know that, what I'm trying to get to is, I don't know how I'm going to vote on this deal, but, but, you know, the storage tanks, I can understand them because they would be put in the city inventory just like, like a drain field. And we have a lot of non-compliant sewers in this town that we have spent a lot of money on. But, you know, so inspectors could come yearly and, and check these, these storage tanks. I think the, the emergency generator makes some sense, but we don't have inspectors to come by and, and make sure that it's a full-time emergency generating system, as you're saying. I mean, I guess we could. We could, we could say instead of they're going to inspect the tank, they gotta go inspect to make sure that this, we have an emergency generator system that's hooked up. So that, that's what I'm trying to wrap my head around, if you can follow that. Because, and then another issue we have is when you guys sell these homes, you know, you guys have a, what you've gone through in the last year, you have an intimate knowledge of, of the problems you've gone through and what you're living with. You sell the house, the sewer back, you know, something fails and the sewer backs up in the basement, well, they're going to come visit us and wonder what the heck's going on, you know? So that's, that's kind of what I'm trying to wrap my head around. I, you know, the mayor had a, we, we did this, it was before I got here, is a, what do we do? What do we do to get the yes? And, and I guess I am glad that, to hear that the engineering department did decide not to put, not to require both grinder pumps. I, I mean, that's a $5,000 to $6,000 concession. I called around a day and I, I won't say who it was, but I could get a 500 gallon concrete tank dropped in a hole for about $500. So I think you're, you know, you gotta dig the hole, but you've got somebody digging there anyway, so.
Well, could I answer that? There's a simple amount of bedrock there. You just don't dig a hole. You're going to have to, to, number one, site it. You'll have to concrete it in, otherwise it would float out of the, out of the ground if there were any groundwater during rain. So between, around $4,000 is the cost to put that. But we're not just talking about cost. Cost is a factor. We're, we're talking about systems. And the biggest issue is the power. If there's a power outage, what happens?
Yep, and I, and I'm just trying to get a grasp around, I've seen a shop drawing of the ejector pump system and I'm just trying to get my arms around the, what you're proposing as an emergency generator system. So right now, I'll let, I'll yield. I appreciate your time, sir.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
We'll now go to Alderman John Roberts. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Huff, since you're standing there, can I ask you one question? If we decide tonight to make you three owners put these tanks in, are you going to still put in the generators?
I couldn't answer for my, for my neighbors. But what we have are assurances from the city engineer that this will solve the problem. Like I pointed out earlier, the issue is what do we do when we have a power outage?
And I, I agree with you. I agree with you there. I think, I think the system you're proposing is better than what our city, city engineers are proposing. I think having the backup power, because like you said earlier, over an extended period of time, in a snowstorm where you don't have power for six days, you need to have that running. If you were relying only on that backup tank, you would be living like you've been living for the last year. And I know you don't want to do that any longer. I see this system as being an extremely reliable system with the generators in there. And the only reason I was asking is I'm worried that if this passes and the tanks go in, you're going to cut the generators off to cut the costs down. And I would rather see the system that you're proposing putting in, and that's why I'm going to vote for that tonight. I, I have seen many, many of these lift station systems and the way they work and how easy it is to get a pump, how quickly you can get a pump if you need one. And from what you've went through over the last year, if you can't get one within 24 or 48 hours, that's not going to be a problem. You're not going to let it back, back into your house. You're, you're not going to keep using it. You have the alarm system that's telling you your tank is full in that pump. So, anyway, I'm just curious. I, I would just like to know which route you're going to go. Is there anyone that knows if the tank is put in, how you plan on going, any of the homeowners?
We wouldn't put a electric, you know, backup at all.
And that's what I was, that's kind of what I was worried about.
Like I said, this whole system that we're proposing, and you saw the, the scope of it, is actually costing the three homeowners there on Culliba H more than it costs to originally build a home in 1970. So we're going to be out a lot of money, but we primarily want to do the right thing.
Can I ask you one more question? There's three of you on this sewer line and that's it? Just three of you on this sewer line?
That's it, just three of us.
Do you have a homeowners association set up, or do you just do this as?
That was not, that was never done. That was not, and the other point I need to make is the way the system is set up now, as it was structured in 1970, Mr. Stanton's sewer has to go through Helen's property in order to get to the lift pumps that we have. We've had one lift pump servicing three homes for 43 years and no problem. I've been living there now for 20 years after I retired. And we had one case where we had to replace the pump. And Farmers was out the very same day. Now with the system that we're proposing to replace the pump, they simply remove four bolts, pull the pump out and put one of their pumps in. So it's, it's very straightforward. And there are other homes in that area. In fact, there are homes on Cliff Drive, there are homes on Skyline Drive that have single pump lift stations. So that's, that's really not an issue. That's a non-issue as to what we would do if a pump went out.
Thank you, Mr. Huff.
Okay, well, thank you.
We'll now go to Darla Drew.
I wasn't done yet, Mayor. I usually relinquish when I'm done. Thank you very much. Can I ask a question of Carla Kusman, our city attorney? Now, I know if they were set up as a homeowners group, the reason I asked is if they were set up as a homeowners group, they could put a deed restriction on this and it would run with the property if the property was sold, I believe. Is there anything that we can do to make sure this runs with, if we do okay this tonight, it runs with the property?
The exception to the criteria manual, that's what you want to run with the property?
Well, what they're doing with these, yeah, the exception that we're doing tonight.
I'm not aware of a way that we could record that with the register of deeds. I mean, it would be on record here at the city. But I'm not aware of a way to, to put that on a restriction on the title.
Thank you very much. And maybe our, our sitting Realtor up here, Chad Lewis, would have the answer to that question.
Well, as you've probably learned in your recent real estate classes, always want to be the source of the source, meaning you might contact your title company about that or an attorney. As I'm not licensed to practice law in the state of South Dakota.
It was a question, is what it was.
Have you relinquished the floor? Okay. We'll now go to Darla Drew.
Okay, I can only play the newbie card so, so many times and then I'm going to have to stop, right? But did I hear earlier that there are 25 of these systems operating in, in the city? In the city limits, is that true?
Yes, there are a number of, I don't know if the number's 25 or 23 or 28, but there are at least 20 systems that have ejector pumps in the city. It's not uncommon.
And they don't have the holding tank situation, or they do?
They do not, to my knowledge, because they were all installed prior to the criteria being revised in 2008.
Okay, well, I think these homeowners are taking a big risk with their willingness to provide their homes as a holding tank. So I would say that if they've done their research and feel comfortable with that, that I'm comfortable with it as well. I yield.
We'll go to Ron Weifenbach.
Wait, wait, let, well, I haven't spoken yet.
You made, you made the motion, didn't you?
I didn't actually.
Talk. Okay.
Whatever.
We'll go to you. We'll go to you.
Thank you.
You had the floor in the beginning, but it's not.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, sorry, don't mean to step on your toes, but I'll lose my train of thought very quickly as my ADD kicks in. Okay, anyway, first of all, a good question for Mr. Foreman, is it correct, is that your name? Sorry, thank you, sir. Approximately what distance from the house would these have to be installed? Either the storage tank or the, I guess the storage tank for starters.
They, it would vary from home to home, but ideally it'd be nice to have the tank, if we had to do the tank, the tank and the pumping, the pumping unit near, near the home, within 20 to 50 feet. I mean, the less, the less excavation, the less materials is preferred.
Okay, and these lots are approximately what size, are they all large enough for that to happen? I'm getting to a point here.
They, they are large, well, I shouldn't say that. Stanton's, his house is very near the access road, Calle Baja Street. He doesn't have much, much space really to put, put the tank, or even put the pump, he has about a 20 by 10 grass yard in the front of his house.
To call Calle Baja a street is kind of a misnomer, isn't it?
That is a misnomer, it's a, there's a portion that's public right-of-way on the eastern edge, and then in front of the three homes, it's, it's a private access, possibly 15 feet wide, 12 to 15 feet wide.
Okay, so, and to point out, as someone had mentioned earlier, if this system was to fail, your system, the overflow tank would be their basement, correct? It would be going back, it'd back up into the house?
That's right.
Okay. So, and what's the odds of a simultaneous failure? That you see between, I mean, if one goes down, are they all gonna go down at the same time, or are we gonna have one house that, I mean, you understand my point?
I did.
The system, the system that you designed, is it designed so that they all, one fails, all fails, or?
No, it's, it's designed where, say you have the instance of a pump failure in the Huff residence on the west end, the two other homeowners, they could still pump to the gravity system in Falls, Falls Drive. Say the power went down, then they would, then they would not have any pumping unless, unless they do the emergency power. However, each homeowner would have different capacity, just because they use different amounts.
Okay, and to full disclosure, I was kinda raised over in this area somewhat through just the fact that I was friends with the original homes owners of both of these, two of these properties, Judge Marshall Young and his wife, Elizabeth, I'm sorry, who's now, Elizabeth Huff, was Elizabeth Huff, and also the Marinkovics, I used to play a lot, a lot when I was younger over there, we used to always go decorate Christmas trees and whatnot, but the point being the same, I'm pretty, pretty well acquainted with the properties and the area, and so I would say that protecting Canyon Lake is a pretty paramount desire, in my, in my opinion. So with that in mind, which one of these systems poses the greatest risk to Canyon Lake? And I understand you correctly, sir, it'd be, it'd be the system with the storage tank, is that correct?
That, that's my opinion, I feel it would just provide a false sense of security.
Well, forgetting the false sense of security, just, just in general, I mean, I'm gonna go out on a limb here and say that if your alarm goes off, you're probably not gonna keep using your, your system. So I, that argument to me doesn't have a lot of water, doesn't hold a lot of water, no, no pun intended, but I will say that, for me, if the ejection system that you've described, if it does, they're gonna immediately know something's wrong, because they're gonna have sewage in their basements, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So, that's not, and that sewage isn't gonna run out into Canyon Lake, Canyon Lake, correct?
Correct.
So, with the, with the storage tanks, there's still that possibility you might do that, though, correct?
There, there is that possibility.
So, to me, the money is, if I thought that your system was less expensive, I'm not, I'm not basing this on the cost to homeowners as much as I'm basing it on the fact that Canyon Lake is more protected with your, your system, at least that's what I'm seeing and I'm hearing, maybe I'm hearing incorrectly, but I appreciate everybody's, you know, work on this, but I just, I think that we need to make sure we keep the Canyon Lake clean, and, you know, if the added benefit is that it's less money to the homeowners, great. But, anyway, this is a pretty unique area, and anybody who hasn't been to the area, I really recommend you check it out. It's definitely probably the only lake front property in western South Dakota that I know of, that's truly a home, so, anyway, thank you.
And now we'll go to Alderman Ron Wifenbach. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, sometimes I sit here and lose my train of thought after a while, but I, 1970 was a good year, it was the year that I moved to Rapid City, and 45 years. I had a question in reference to the system itself, it doesn't seem like they're changing any of the lines or anything, so, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to direct this question to Dale, Tech, please.
Please do.
My question is, Dale, is that, the only thing, what triggered this event? I guess I'm sitting here, and the whole time I've heard nothing, that what triggered this event, I guess? What triggered the fact that these people gotta upgrade to a new criteria?
As I understand it, they have a common lift station, and it has a very long discharge line that goes up the hill and discharges into a gravity main. That discharge lane has, or discharge line has failed somewhere, they don't know where it's broken, they can't fix it, they don't, for them to try to excavate, to try to fix that line, would be impossible, they're better off replacing the discharge line, as well as the, the pumping system that they have. So, they can't pump because they can't discharge.
Right. I've been fortunate enough to be in on a lot of these conversations about private sewers, which, in a lot of, a lot of arenas, I disagree with the city's take on private sewers, and I've, I've been very public about that, and I, and I, in this situation, I can understand the differences. The discharge from the, the pump to the, to the, the main sewer evidently caused some sort of backup, and it made these people aware that they've got a problem. So the question, Mr. Mayor, I would have to Mr. Huff, since he's been able to answer all the questions, he's been there since 1970, and the, all the three properties that are on the line, Mr., if I may, all the three properties have been on the same line since 1970?
Yes.
So we've got 45 years, and now today, running off of one lift station and one discharge that's since it's failed since 1970, which could've been at that time maybe a different type of line, I mean, that, that's past its life expectancy anyway, for a discharge line, I would assume.
It's very impressive, the discharge line is metal, and over that period of time, 43 years, you're gonna have the deterioration of the pipe, and we've had samples, when we went out to Farmers, and they showed us samples of pipe like this. What we would be replacing it with is a plastic pipe that would have a much longer life, it wouldn't be subject to electrolysis, or rust, or corrosion, as would a metal pipe. And I think, Chad, I think you are familiar with the property, because it was built by, by Liz Young, who is my wife, and Marshall Young, and it was designed by Dick Connect, and they designed it as technology would dictate back in 1970. One of the things that we didn't emphasize was that with Stanton's property being so narrow, that there is no gradient, there's no contour gradient, and we paid quite a bit of money to have a survey of the entire line, of the entire street where it would be laid, and there's no contour at his property that would basically allow for this tank. That is a problem, that's why I pointed out that the discharge now goes downhill through Helen's property to the common lift station, that was the best solution they had those days.
And I understand that, because I'm, the reasoning here is I think that, the one I wanted to know, what caused this event, and it was, you know, a failure of the discharge line, which I clearly understand.
Yes.
I mean, I've seen some of these metal, you know, not having the correct catholics, I think they call it, or whatever it is, I've seen them fail in a year or two, so 45 years on the same line, I mean, I can't see any reasoning why this thing, I think the new lines are 70 to 80 years, maybe, and I can't see any reason for that to, that to have, be a problem again. It wasn't, it's not like a septic tank, and like I said earlier, I've been on the council long enough, I've seen the private sewer lines, I was in on the council when we built the septic tank, where that actually brought to us on how we were gonna handle septic tanks in the future that we're, we're dumping into Canyon Lake, or dumping into Rapid Creek. And I think that the understanding of Canyon Lake, if anybody's been out there and they're swimming in there anyway, they might wanna check, you know, what the nitrate levels are and the, and the other things that are in there already. But if, in a case there was a failure, I mean, the pump is, the, the failure would, would back up into your, into your houses. I'm not sure where we're getting that it's going to dump into Canyon Lake, that's the part I don't quite understand, so.
Well, I'd like to mention something else, just for record. We discussed with the city, and the homeowners discussed amongst ourselves, that we, instead of having a common lift station, we would go to individual lift stations at their homes.
Mr. Huff, yeah, and I appreciate that, and I have a lift station at my house, and I just built my house last year, so I understand exactly how they work, and I've never had anybody question on the fact if it would fail or not. So if it did fail, I'm assuming, because the, the main line from the city has, has a backflow valve that stops the main line from going into your house, so if it fails, one of your basements, or, or two or three of them are gonna fill up, and someone's gonna be on top of it, I'm not sure that I can support the 500 gallon tank.
You mentioned you installed a lift station at your home?
Yeah, there's a lift station in my home.
And you don't have a 500 gallon tank?
Well, I do, it's called a 10-foot walls in my basement.
Well, okay, but that would've been under the code, but we, we, we're here tonight to.
No, I appreciate it, I think we've given you a lot of latitude, Mr. Huff.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll make a closing statement, just say that I, 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 I'm not sure, I've had a little bit of time to study this issue tonight, but from the information I've gathered tonight, I think that, I don't see after 45 years and not really having any major problems and not having any backflow in the Canyon Lake, I mean, I swam in that thing in 1970s all the way up to probably a few years ago, so, but, I don't, I don't know if I, if there's a real need for it, and I hate to go against what staff is suggesting, but I'm not, I can't support it, so, thank you.
We'll go to Alderman Brad Estes. Brad?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to try to do a substitute motion, and hopefully it's substantially different enough. I make a motion, we approve their appeal, subject to the design plans including the electrical backup system for each pump, so, so that's included in the plans, and that that system can be approved by staff, and if I get a second, I'd like to keep the floor just for a second.
Before we accept that as a motion, did the, the very, the very first motion on the floor, would that have required the electrical backup?
No.
Okay, well then we'll accept, we'll accept this, everyone understands this is a second substitute motion, there is no room for additional motions, so we have to vote on this motion up or down at some point, and you have the floor.
Thank you, and I've never been to Ron Wifenbach's house, and, and, and I believe there's a lot of, but I would guess, if I had to guess, his lift station is substantially different than this, and is, he's lifting just his plumbing that's in the basement up high enough so that it can gravity out, probably about six feet above the basement floor. We're not, he's not, it's substantially different, but with that, I've made my motion, thanks.
All right, let me repeat the motion before we go to additional discussion. So we now have a second substitute motion on the floor to grant the property owner's request with the stipulation of electrical backup, and overturn the denial for the exception. Overturn staff's denial of the exception.
If, if it could, yeah, I, I mean, I want the electrical system to be part of the plans from KLJ, so that's, so that it's, it's part of the project, because that's, that's what we've told it's gonna be. Well.
You mentioned natural gas early, earlier.
Well, I don't know how this is gonna be, you know, I guess I'd leave it up to staff, I mean, if, but, but as I understand, it's electrical system, and whether it's got a propane tank, or whether it's gas, and, but I, I, it's, to me, it'd be electrical system that's, that's specific, that when there's power, goes off, it kicks, it, power's available to that generator, or to that lift station. It's, it's duty-specific to this ejection system.
Alderman Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, is this okay with the petitioners? This, is this, is this an okay satisfactory compromise with everybody there?
They're asking if it's okay with us, yes.
Okay, so this is basically the design we were talking about prior, anyway, this wasn't, this is no new territory for you? Okay, just making sure, I can support this motion then.
We'll go to Alderwoman Amanda Scott. Amanda?
Thank you, Mayor, may I address Mr. Dale Tech, please?
You may.
Dale, are you comfortable, do you understand where, what this motion is asking of city staff at this point?
I do, I believe any electrical system will have to meet the requirements of any electrical code that we have, so it would be inspected by our city building official office, so I, I understand that, and I think that's appropriate.
Thank you, I yield the floor.
Richie Nordstrom. Richie?
Thank you, Mayor. If I can ask Dale Tech a question about this motion? Dale, will this require your, you've got a name for your group here, that oversight committee, will they have to go back and rewrite because of this motion now? I just wanna make sure we're okay.
I guess that's up to the city to direct staff to change the policy, if any future ones come forward, certainly we would apply the same criteria to any new system or any other system that we have in this case.
Thank you. Yield the floor.
Seeing no further discussion, everyone understands the motion? Everyone understands the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, good discussion. We're now on item 62, which is city council subcommittees, or committee assignments, this technically should probably be under council items and liaison reports, since the, the council appointments are determined by the council, this is simply so everyone knows what the assignments were, so if there's no discussion, if we could just have a motion to acknowledge. We have a motion by Lewis, and a second by Doyle to acknowledge, and we'll go to Brad Estes.
That's fine, Mayor, I, some of these are still a little fluid, I believe I'm going to take Darla Drew's position on CIP, so, I mean, no, I, I just said that there, there was one change, I'm gonna take your spot on the CIP, because she couldn't make it, so there, I'll get with Lindsay before it's, but it'll be posted, and I imagine somebody might come up with something else, but, 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 subject to that, it's, it's cast in stone until we change it again. Thanks.
All in favor of the acknowledgment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're now on public hearing items 63 through 66, I do not have any speaker request forms, the public hearing is now open, public hearing is now closed, we're on consent items 63 through 65. Do we have a motion on all three of those items, please? Motion by Lewis, second by, by John Roberts? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 66. Oh, I guess we voted on 66, too. Okay. Item 66 is Resolution 2014-62B, levying assessment for Downtown Business Improvement District 2014. A motion by Lewis, and a second by Roberts, and we'll go to our finance officer, Pauline Sumpson.
Thank you, as much as I would like to have you guys approve this tonight, I regretfully have to inform you that the Rapid City Journal failed to publish our advertisement. So at this point, we are going to try our darndest to have it published before Friday, so you can continue it to the next council meeting, but if we can't get it in there on Thursday, it has to go to the first meeting in September, which creates a whole nother mess, because there are timelines in place for this. So, I'm not exactly sure what the motion needs to be to beings, I would like to try and get it on the, the meeting on the 18th, but we don't know for sure until we have a conversation with the Rapid City Journal.
Do we need a special council meeting for this situation? We could have it either in the front end of legal and finance, or public works, and take care of it.
Let's try for the 18th, and if I can't, then we'll.
We'll have that special council meeting on the 11th, Mayor.
Good idea. We have a special council meeting on the 11th?
Unfortunately, the advertisement has to be in the paper at least 10 days prior to the actual hearing.
We get a refund?
Be nice, they buy ink by the barrel.
I would like them to just give us the advertisement for free, but I don't know that that will happen, so.
All right, so.
Motion to continue till August 18.
Till August 18, and staff has a discretion to bring it back at a different time if, if needed. That's okay with the motion maker and the seconder? Seconder was Steve Laurenti. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Bill list?
There are no additions to the bill list, so that it is that which is before you at $6,39,368.72.
We have a motion by Laurenti, and a second by John Roberts. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Motion to adjourn. We have a motion by Lewis. Opposed? Motion carries. Motion to adjourn. We have a motion by Lewis and a second by Darla Drew. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.